Good evening, welcome to January ninth, two thousand twenty Planning Board meeting. Before we jump right into the first item of the agenda, um, I talked with Kelly here a month ago, and Bruce and I met with Kelly and asked her to do a little summary sized thing for us. I think she started, actually started the conversation, but anyway. Chip used to do it, or Naomi did it before Chip was, before Chip took the job, and then Kelly kind of brought up, she did it before. I don't know, did everybody get one of these?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, right underneath your agenda.
So right underneath your agenda, there should be a little summary for Plan Review for Peacock Hill. Yep. Got it, which I think is awesome. It gives us, um, she's gonna do this for every application, for every hearing, I assume.
Yes.
Every application, every hearing, so you update it, et cetera. So give us a little overview of what's happened, prior history, concerns we have mentioned in the past, et cetera.
This, this entire page relates to Peacock Hill LLC.
Yes, yes.
LLC. And so each one is going to have a separate page.
Each, each plan that I review.
Each, when you prepare a summary.
Each, each application.
Each, whatever summaries you prepare will only have one on it, so we can.
Correct.
Thank you.
And it might not be as lengthy as this, because this had a history to it, a couple of hearings before, or.
On that note, Mr. Semple has, oh, I'd like to first have to open up the continuation of proposed subdivision, Peacock Hill Road LLC, on Chuck Street, tax map four oh nine, lot one fifty-four and one fifty-four one. Mr. Semple, sir.
Good evening, Colin. Hope everyone had a nice holiday season here.
All right.
Long. It seemed like it was really long.
Yeah, it did.
Anyways, we're back to revisit this. I think you guys will hopefully remember. I'll just give it, it's easy to speak if you're talking to kind of.
Oh, you say, do you have plans for us, or should we grab the old?
I did this to this, too.
Thank you. I like your shirt.
We need a shirt.
Bruce gets his own, he needs it.
There we go. So again, we discussed this briefly last time here, you have the summary there, and I haven't seen it, so I'm assuming it's gonna be all the stuff we talked about. Again, so we were, we have the two lots that were approved, we're re-subdividing this twelve acre lot with the frontage. The question's last time, we're waiting, we were really just waiting on the dredge and fill, which we have a permit number on there for you, we have a, and we mentioned a test pit, um, but, so instead we just gave you an approved septic design, which I have a copy, a small copy of, if you want to see that, but it has a construction approval number on that.
Construction approval number?
Yup.
If you're worried about that, there's other problems.
What's that?
That's good, that's good.
Okay, so we got that, put the well radius on there, which I didn't have this afternoon, I caught that one. Um, I think Kelly mentioned last time, we were missing that lot line across there, a lot line to be eliminated.
Yup.
Um, monimitation's been set per tick mark standards, uh, and I don't know, I opened myself up, any questions you got on this? You guys, we're fairly familiar with the site at this point, uh, so. Re-sub, yeah, I didn't make up the title. I guess, I guess you're re-sub, well, I guess as we just had a subdivision, re-subdividing. I guess all subdivisions are re-subdivisions technically, if you think about it.
Is there a note about the variance on here? I know we should've said something before.
Yeah, I can add, um.
It's a note six saying variance, case number, yabbadabbadoo, whatever it is.
No, I do not see a variance, so I could add that, note six, variance, something like that.
I, I can get to that information.
Okay, you can give me the specific wording for, and all the wording, okay.
Article yabbadabbadoo, whatever.
Yeah, all the quote unquote, and, that's Kelly. Yeah, make sure I get that on for final.
This shows frontage on Worley Road, am I, or is that just an error, right there?
I believe that's an error. I think Worley, Worley Road's like right here.
That's what I think.
The hatching on your locus map appears to go to Worley Road. Neil just pointed out.
Oh, that's, yeah, it's probably from the original, that's from the original, remember the original lots that went out there that we, Greco, that's Greco, so I just trimmed the, trimmed the.
Yeah.
The hatching up a little bit.
Your hatching locus maps have done touch.
Yeah, that's, yeah, probably just, that's probably carried through. I can trim that.
That could be an AutoCAD thing, too.
Yeah, I just.
The hatching is weird in AutoCAD sometimes.
Yeah, I can trim, well, it's just, it's probably the old lot, I just have to trim that last, whatever it was between there and Worley.
You said you had a copy of the wetland permit, or you have a copy?
No, you guys should have copies. I did not bring a copy, though. I talked to him, he said you guys should, we, you know, we sent a bunch of those out there.
It's a septic.
There isn't.
It's a septic.
I was gonna plant it in sil fence, but it's on the, that plan, so we don't need to worry about it.
Are you surprised that there was a wetland permit granted for this?
I was initially, until I talked to some people in the office about it, now I'm not. The reason I was initially surprised is 'cause if you take these two lots, basically, you could get access to this portion by missing the wetlands.
Right.
But you can't get access to this, no matter what you do, 'cause it's an island. You have to cross the wetland to get to this.
But this is buildable.
Doesn't matter, you're getting access to this area right here. They can't deny you access to that area. Whether the lot line's here, or this whole thing, they can't deny you access to that area. That's a taken.
Well, you, you still own it, you just can't put vehicles there over the wetland. That's, that's a strange interpretation, because that would mean.
Well, that's not an official DES interpretation, that's.
Yeah.
Talking to a couple of wetland scientists.
Okay.
Initially, I was surprised, yes.
And then you wanted, um.
I still have the wetland permits, I'm not gonna worry about that.
Oh, you got the, okay. Silk fence is what we're looking for.
Oh.
Yeah, I was gonna have a note about silk fence, but at hundred scale, whatever the system.
Yeah, it's gonna be like, well, here, okay.
Yeah, it's shown in the wetland plan, so hopefully things are built by the wetland plan. Anybody have any comments, questions? Anybody in the public like to speak?
So we wanna make two revisions to the plan. Add a note six.
Add note six about the variance.
With the variance language.
And.
And revise the locus.
Fix the hatching in the locus.
Make emotionally approve the plan with two conditions. The variance note number six be added, describing the variance that was granted, and revise the locus map to properly show the lot configuration.
Second. Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Propose, abstain, congratulations.
Thank you, sir.
Yes, you too, enjoy. We did receive a conservation easement plan that we were asked to review. There's an RSA that basically says that the planning board, how do I say, how do I say this? A plan has to be sent to the planning board for information purposes prior to recording, if it's a boundary survey. So you're not, you're not doing a subdivision, you have to send one to us anyway. I think that's why we gotta look at it. I glanced at it. Looks good to me. For, for our information, we saw it.
Can.
You wanna see it?
Can the rest of us see it?
Sure.
So was that, we signed the notice that there was some rule change of subdivisions, was that?
That's next.
That's next. It's off Collins Landing.
It's like a third of it. It all goes that way.
What kind of a conservation is this, do we know?
Nope.
You don't have a copy of the easement?
Don't need one. We don't, we're not reviewing it, it's for our information. It doesn't need our approval, doesn't need anything from us.
It's like a merger.
The RSA states we have to get a copy of the plan prior to recording.
This is Russell Drive.
It's mostly for assessing purposes, the planning board has to get it.
And we don't know who this is, or why this is?
It's being prepared for the Conservation Commission.
Didn't we approve the Collins Ledge subdivision?
Not, well, the planning board did.
Years ago.
Evidently, there was never a conservation easement, a plan done for the easement. It's probably just a, the easement was done at the time, but there was probably never a plan done for it, so that's essentially what this is, I think.
This plan is a retracement survey of the conservation easement area of the Collins Ledge subdivision, and where, as described in the deed of Walter K. Erickson, Gerald J. Gagnon, and Joseph R. Vashon to the town, acting through the Conservation Commission, dated September eighth, nineteen eighty-seven, and recorded. The owner of record is, of lot four, is Wilkinson Properties Fund Four Limited Partnership. Shoreline of rare reservoir, also known as Horace Lake, is shown, et cetera. Boundary of the conservation, shown at elevation so-and-so for reference, see a deed, benchmark used. This is the first time I've seen anything like this, and maybe one of you guys could explain to me what's happening.
Normally, I don't, normally, we don't get them.
In other words, we created a subdivision.
No, no, in other words, somebody is surveying an existing property, and prior to recording this plan, by state law, they have to give a copy to the planning department. That's the only reason we got it.
Why does it say? In other words, the easement has nothing to do with the subdivision that we approved, or the planning board approved at some point?
The easement was part of the subdivision.
The easement was done with the subdivision in eighty-nine, eighty-seven, whatever it was, eighty-seven.
So in eighty-seven, somebody divided property, they put an easement on part of it.
Yes.
And?
And in December, the Conservation Commission decided to have a survey.
Now, how do you look?
And the conservation.
Hundred and thirty acres thereabouts?
Yeah. The Conservation Commission, as a result of this, now has a map of the easement, which presumably the town owns. The town has that easement, or is it?
That's my assumption.
Conservation from the town.
Yeah.
Yes.
I see. So nothing is changing as a result of this?
If somebody surveyed your property, and you wanted a map recorded, it has to come to the planning board first, for information purposes only.
If I have a survey done?
Yes.
And you want to record it?
Yes.
Even though you're not changing.
No easement.
Nope, no nothing.
No, changing nothing?
Nothing, changing nothing.
Okay, thank you.
RSA six seventy.
Not a certified plot plan, but the whole survey of the land.
Some kind of.
And if I don't want it recorded, if the Conservation Commission did not want to record this, then it wouldn't have come to us.
It would just get filed, or they would keep it, or surveyor would keep it.
Usually, if you go through the expense of doing that, you pay them forty bucks.
Or you broke it.
I'm good at that. Second item of the agenda is continuation proposed subdivision, no, building permit, subdivision regulation, zoning orders, proposed changes. Let's start with the zoning. Were you here for subdivision, zoning, or building, or all three?
Well, we're just.
We're just here to understand what's happening. We missed, I don't know when the first meeting happened, so we, we kind of don't know what's going on.
December sixteenth or thereabouts, probably?
What is it?
Middle of December.
Middle of December, yeah, for the first meeting.
Yeah, we're, we're just here to make sure somebody's not trying to do anything around.
If you could.
Oh, come on.
Pass it down, pass that one down.
Oh, the whole thing's all.
It's two pages.
Oh, that's something that I get from the.
These, these are all of the changes?
This is, well, it's, so basically, just what's going on tonight is the subdivision regulation changes, and I'll get you a copy of which ones we're changing. Building permit ordinance, or the articles that are actually going in for a town vote, and the zoning changes, again, the article that's going into town vote. So what you have attached is the actual wording for the articles of what's going to be voted on.
Can you make sure the folks who are in attendance have a copy?
Has this wording been given to the attorney?
So that's been had legal review, so with the building permit ordinance, had legal review.
Well, I know the, uh, if anything, it's a travel trailer and so forth, just changed in the state statute, then we defined it.
Yeah, we leaned heavily on that.
Cause I, I have it.
What's that?
We leaned heavy, heavily on that.
Oh, the two sixteen?
Yeah.
What are we discussing?
Definition of recreational vehicle, number one. That's a zoning change.
You wanted here when the first hearing, so to answer a question about regulating campers and not being used for full-time residents, Bruce came up with the actual definition that's in the state RSA under campgrounds, that that travel, travel trailer would fit our needs. So if we use that definition, it would fit, I think, one of the bottom sentences.
So you're looking, yeah, like.
You can't use it as a full-time resident.
Like up on, um.
Arm Hills.
Yeah, Arm Hills or Crescente's up, was it, up there, on, uh, Cessette's.
Gettings Road, or.
Yeah, Gettings Road, where they have, those are restricted, and we have an ordinance from, they can only use them certain times of year, so this is just a carry.
There is a campground ordinance for the state, but we actually wanted something that the town could put in our own.
Yeah, and I know the state just re-divined some of this.
So, right now, the, right now, the definition for a travel trailer is, shall mean any vehicle or similar portable structure intended for occasional and temporary occupancy, and having no foundation other than wheels, jacks, and skirting. We're gonna change that to what is here.
And by doing that, we would now allow anything that does not fit in this category to be used as a permanent residence, is that correct?
Not allowed.
No. I thought that, under the current ordinance, anything that's a travel trailer cannot be used as a permanent residence.
No, it doesn't say that.
That's what we're looking for. We're looking for something to say you cannot use it as a full-time residence.
It doesn't say that.
And our ordinance does not say that anywhere.
Right.
It defines camper, it defines campground, it defines travel trailer, but there's nowhere in the ordinance that says that you cannot use it as a full-time residence.
And how does this say that?
One of the, one of the last sentences actually says it cannot be used as a full-time residence, or the wording.
It's the last sentence.
It just gave it away, so, yeah.
It's, the last sentence says it shall be designed primarily not for use as a permanent dwelling, but as a temporary dwelling for recreational camping, travel, or seasonal use.
There we go.
Does that simply, the way I read that, that only applied to C, a recreational trailer, because it was included in that sentence, it did not apply, apply to A or B?
Well, if you look under, before that, it says, the definition of recreational vehicle means any of the following, A, B, or C.
I agree.
So that's, that defines all of them, and that's pretty much what the statute says.
Doesn't mean one of the following, it says any of the following.
Any of the following.
I understand that. That's a recreational vehicle. Is this, could.
I see your point.
Could somebody show me the, where in the ordinance, we define, we impose restrictions on the use of travel trailers now to be called recreational vehicles?
We don't, we don't.
We don't, that's the problem.
That's the point.
Then I'm, I'm confused. If you're simply defining something, you're not putting any limitations on it.
Oh, sure you are, yeah, there's a limitation in that reading.
It's the same as your driveways and common driveways. You have, you have a sentence in there that it says it can't be used, it's kind of as the frontage, that's.
Now, we have a definition with no limitation, as the zoning is now, presently. Which is the enforcement issue.
Okay, let's try it again. If you take this last sentence out, I don't mean take it out of the definition.
Make it a separate paragraph.
Move it up so that A, B, and C are indented, okay, and the last sentence is extended out into the margin. Then you will have accomplished what you want to do. It will be clear to everyone that the it shall sentence applies to A, B, and C. Right now, a lawyer is going to argue that the it sentence only applies to C.
Well, she's already brought it before legal counsel to approve it.
This is our second hearing, this is our last hearing, so substantial changes cannot be made.
I think you can make it a separate sentence, though.
I'm suggesting it be at least.
All you need to do is. You'd have to send it back to legal counsel.
All you gotta do is hit, at their period, hit return.
As code enforcement, that helps me do the job that I want to do.
I think after the, overhang, period, hit return twice, and it's what, hit, set it in separate paragraphs. Is that what you're saying, Neil?
I can put a period in it, but I can't.
So I'm to read this, I'm to read this as follows.
You're not adding any letters, nothing, just hit return.
I can, I, I'll try it and give it to her, I guess, but.
Yeah, just the double.
Recreational vehicle means A, B, and C, and this is my interpretation of the way you folks are reading this. Neither A nor B nor she, or C shall be designed primary, excuse me, A and B and C shall not, shall be designed primarily not for use as a permanent dwelling, but as a temporary dwelling.
Yeah, I don't want to take any letters out, I just wanna.
You can't, it's a state RSA that you're copying.
No, I, I understand that.
Yeah, but if we hit, hit the return key and start that sentence down here.
But it's your intention that this sentence.
Applies to everything.
Apply, okay.
That's it. It's basically, it's according to statute, that's.
And then explain to me how this has the impact that you're talking about.
Because you can use this as an enforcement, to get people to move, to not occupy them fully.
Year-round, twenty-four, twenty, twelve months.
So if I own an A or a B or a C, then.
You can't live in it three hundred and sixty-five days a year.
It's seasonal. What's seasonal mean?
Campground, whatever the season is, open there, like, April to October.
Say something as far as code enforcement?
I mean, it depends on where.
When I do any type of an enforcement, if it's a little iffy, or if it's a gray area to interpret, I always go back to the purpose and the intent. So this conversation that we're having right now is the intent.
Defining the intent.
So three, four, ten, twelve, twenty years from now, you can go back to the minutes, and it would say, the intent of defining this travel trailer is to not allow them as full-time residents, right there is your, your case.
And you're following the state statute?
And you're following the state statute.
Right.
Maybe.
I agree.
How they wrote it.
This doesn't happen very often, I'm gonna, Neil, agree with Neil, that I, if I was, if I'm, if my client says, I have a pickup camper, and I'm gonna live in it, this does not say I can't do that.
It does.
No, it doesn't.
Motor home van, which is portable temporary dwelling to be used for travel recreation, pickup, pickup camper.
It does say temporary there, too.
And it says pickup camper.
Is there someplace in our ordinance where we say something about travel trailers?
Just the, just the definition, that's it, that's all.
Just the definition.
That's it?
That's it. Same as camper, same as campground. There is nothing in the ordinance that says you cannot live full-time.
I feel better, no, I didn't see that before.
It, it just refers back to the RSA.
You, I, simply creating a definition does not establish a restriction or limitation.
Okay.
You could define.
Listen, redefine for driveway. Driveways shall mean any access to a lot tractor parcel land. Driveways must be located in the frontages that would use to determine the lot size. There we did it.
It does.
But in the ordinance, there are a whole bunch of sections that refer to driveways, and say, the driveway this, the driveway that, and now we define the driveway here. So there's gotta be someplace in the ordinance that says travel trailers this, or travel trailers that.
That's what we're trying to do, with enacting, following the state statute, which is.
But you're, you're simply saying what a travel trailer is.
But we can't, because the first hearing with us was what we decided, it would take care of that one.
You're not, you're not imposing, I'm not objecting to this definition, and I think I agree with you that what you're trying to do, but I don't think what you're doing accomplishes what you would like to see it do, done.
So I got a question for you. Four years ago, before we had article, whatever the driveway is. Thirty-six, two thousand and five. In two thousand and four, that's all we had for driveways, in the whole zoning words. That was it.
Okay.
And that's wrong, you're saying. Cause that's the same thing we're doing now.
Yes, I, I, I'm very glad that we put in article thirty-six.
I'm just making sure you understand that we had that for thirty years, that way.
Listen, a lot of this ordinance is really not as well-written as, as it should be. And if, if you're going to do this, I mean, it's too late to make a change, a substantive change here, but for next year, let's start, let's put something in the ordinance that says, travel trailers may not, sorry, recreational vehicles may not be used as permanent homes.
The only other alternative of that, you know, at this point, is to pull it, and don't put it in.
No, I don't wanna pull it, we gotta leave it in there.
I think we leave it.
There's nothing wrong with having it in there.
I mean.
Leave it the way it is.
Well, the thing is, is, you know, the way you're talking, is that she's the one, Kelly, or Kyle, the ones that are gonna have to go out and enforce this. The minute it passes, we enact it, it gets, it's.
Well, she understands our, she understands our intent right now.
And if it doesn't work next year, I'll let you know, and then we can put a sentence right in there, I guess.
She knows what the intent is, and she can enforce that intent, but if somebody starts making illegal fuss over it, who knows what's going to happen?
Then that's up to the attorneys to worry about it from there.
Right, but we.
Cause we've already got the attorney's approval on it, at this point.
I don't know what the attorney approved. He may just have approved that this is a wonderful definition, without going, going beyond that.
So, do we wanna hit return and move that to a separate?
No, it's fine the way it is.
No, you should hit return.
No, it says.
I think if you read the whole thing in its entirety, I think it's fine.
It says temporary dwelling up here, temporary dwelling here, temporary dwelling here. It's covered.
You want me to leave it for now, and then if it.
Yeah, I think if you read it word for word, it.
I'll let you know what happens in here if we're enforcing it.
Motor home, a portable temporary dwelling.
Yeah, you talked about the camper, and it specifically says pickup camper, you know?
Yeah.
Which is a structure designed to be mounted on a truck chassis for use as a temporary dwelling for travel, recreation, or vacation.
How about a nine-month temporary dwelling, Madam Enforcement Officer?
We have that.
I'm living in my camper for nine, my recreational vehicle for nine months. Happens to be September through June.
Uh, May through, May first or October first is the state, state statute.
For what? I'm not camping. I own a piece of land.
If it's a temporary dwelling, you're camping.
Yeah, then there's a article, seven of that RSA says that you have to have circumstances, circumstances approved by the governing board. So if you came to us and you said, I'm building my house, can I live in my camper?
Which we had.
Find out, we did, we've done it before, but now we know what provisions are being had. You know, you're, we know how you're getting rid of your waste, we know you've got potable water, we know you're living healthy on that land for how long, and we've given you a year. That's all in writing, it's documented.
I've got my forty-foot, I don't know what you call them, park, park trailer, you know, the kind with, with, some window goes out, moves outward and so forth. I, it's less than four hundred feet.
Mm-hmm.
And I park it on my two-acre lot, and I live in it, and it's got water, toilet facilities, and so forth. And I live in it from September to June. Have I violated anything?
September first through the winter, and then the next June?
Yes.
Yes.
Because.
You don't have permission from the town, yes, you've violated.
What did I violate?
Yup.
You violated the state. You violated the state RSA definition of camping, which is May first to October first.
Why am I camping? This is my, gonna be my permanent home.
According to this, it can't be. It's considered a recreational vehi-, plus you have to prove where you're gonna get rid of your waste.
If you have a-
I, I'd have Dave Septic come along and pick it up periodically.
But-
He empties my tank. I, I know this is, I'm, I know this is picky, Jack, but I know what people are gonna do, and I know what the people who are-
Well, then, I guess we'll deal with it when it comes, but-
But the point is, I, you, you either accept it or you don't. I can't change anything.
No, no, I understand.
So I mean, again, that's something that's gonna, that's gonna be decided in a venue, away at above us, with men in a black robe at some other venue.
This certainly is better than what we have.
I'll make a motion, please.
Definitely.
Number one is?
I think you need to have a public comment.
Oh, yeah. Anybody from public can speak, on the definition of travel trailer.
Has this really been a problem in Ware?
Yes.
It's starting to become that, yeah.
Did you know?
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
I'm lost down here in a sense. A couple of questions. Which, which set of regulations is this going into?
The travel trailer's going into zoning.
Going into zoning.
As a definition.
Why don't you just print what you already have here, with the purpose, right after the, right after the article, so it's, it's more clear, at least.
Well, this is, that's the way it's gonna appear.
When it goes, when it goes to the town clerk, there is a sentence that says a purpose or intent right under there, that's just a quick sentence, I thought-
Yeah, but is it printed?
No, it's not, doesn't, doesn't go into actual zoning, no.
Yes, yes.
Why not put it in the zoning? So-
So the purpose, yeah, for the purpose of that.
Put the purpose in there.
Well, that really could be argued, that's-
Well, you could probably look at it.
As part of the salesmanship for this article, the last sentence, as I understand-
Right, that's what goes to town clerks, so when people come in.
Is going to appear on the, on the ballot, on the warrant.
The last sentences?
Yes.
Yeah, but I'd like to see it appear in the zoning regulations.
I did not give that to the lawyer to approve.
You didn't?
Nope.
Okay, just asking.
That's, that's the issue that I'm having, Chuck.
And that would be a substantial change to what we have.
Yeah.
Would be, huh?
Yeah.
Yeah.
You don't, you don't have to vote on the purpose, you just, it's just courtesy that you let them run.
Wouldn't be a bad idea to have that in there.
Every one of those ordinance should have a purpose.
Before we, before Bruce makes his motion-
They already made it.
No, we talked them.
When these appear in the warrant, in many cases, we don't have the actual language.
No, these are going just like this.
No, I understand that. We, we describe, are you in favor of amending section so-and-so in order to do X, Y, Z? If you want a full copy, it's in the town clerk's office. Is there some reason why we decided that we wanted to put all of this language in here rather than just the summary that we usually do?
I'd rather have all the language in there, so everybody can read what they're voting on.
They know what they're voting for.
I, I know what you're saying, and that usually happens if you're doing like a couple of chapters of something, so you're not printing the whole thing.
Mailer trying to save a little paper cost is what it is.
Yeah, that's the mailer, that doesn't the warrant, so.
And you'll see, you'll see on the next two, but this one was actually a state statute, so you have to put the whole wording in.
Got it. Okay, thank you.
So I'll finish my, making my motion. I make a motion that we, what, to put this forward to the selectmen to, to print in the warrant, as, as-
Number one amendment.
Number one, as, as printed?
Selectmen have nothing to do with it.
Second.
No.
Selectmen have nothing to do with it.
Okay.
No.
So the motion is to have number one placed on the warrant for voter consideration at the March two thousand and twenty town meeting.
Yes. Selectmen don't have to prove anything, it's us, heck with you guys.
That's right. It just goes-
You have to inform them, I believe.
Yeah, that's it.
That's, that's what the representative, the ex officious has done.
Yeah.
Discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained? Okay, one, one passed. Number two is something, number two is that?
The second one is, and I, I found it way back in the eighties when you adopted your RSA for penalties, and for some reason, it's been wrong in the zoning ordinance all that time. So that's all. This is just a correction. But even though it's an administrative correction, you voted it on at a previous warrant article, so it has to be corrected.
Amendment has to be voted on, yep.
Yep. So, five-one-two, on page seventeen of your zoning, it says violation penalties, reference New Hampshire RSA six seventy-three colon fifteen.
Seventeen.
And it's not six seventy-three colon fifteen dash seventeen, it's-
Six seventy-six?
RSA six seventy-six, which says it right in another paragraph about penalties, so it-
Is it six seventy-six point seventeen or colon seventeen?
Colon seventeen.
There's, there's not a colon here. My copy is just a point.
You got a typo on mine, too.
Yep.
But that's definitely a typo.
That you can fix.
That one you can fix.
Is it on the, on the, can you move the marker? Because the sentence right above there is Board of Adjustment RSA six seventy-three.
There's one thing that I really object to on number two, and that is referring to us as the panning board.
Oh.
That's my-
Another, another typo.
You're not a panning board?
Some people would say we are, but-
She can fix that, too, that's a little typo.
So I don't have to pay the full invoice for the attorney who reviewed this?
Not only is there one panning board, there's two.
There's two panning boards.
Somebody stuttered the whole, the whole paragraph.
So her spell check takes it, then, whatever a panning board is.
Am I correct that, that those two paragraphs are inadvertently duplicated? No. They both seem to be the same.
Yes. It's the same thing.
Yes.
So-
Oh, yeah, because part of it went down below the-
Yeah. Probably hit return.
Yeah, because the rest of it went below the line. An administrative correction.
Because you're special. That's my copy.
That's our two zoning ordinance that are gonna go to town vote?
Article two.
That's, that's-
That's the second article, yeah.
Now, here, make a motion, Bruce?
I make a motion, we place Article two as slightly corrected.
Okay.
On the warrant?
Second.
Discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained? Okay, I've been saying for a few years now, I don't know if everybody remembers when we, two thousand and fourteen, we did a conditional use, the first one we did was for the aquifer protection district. When that was done, the person that retyped the zoning, or edited the zoning after that town meeting, put, or section three point thirteen point three, the conditional use criteria, they put it in Article three, which I don't have any idea why it was there. I thought all along we wanted it, and should be, in whichever you all-
Article twenty-nine.
Yes.
Yes.
Which is the offer, because the-
Which is supposed to be coloned thirteen.
The criteria we were talking about was specific for the aquifer protection district. It's not meant for every conditional use permit we have. So Article twenty-nine point thirteen states a conditional use permit is required for the following uses, and granting such a permit, the planning board must first determine that the proposed use is not prohibited, and will be in compliance with the performance standards, yabba-dabba-do. But we have this in Article three, which should be in twenty-nine. I've said something several times, Chip was gonna get it moved a couple of years ago, it didn't happen. So Kelly is nice enough to, this is just a administrative correction thing, no vote needed?
So this is FYI for us?
I think we need to vote on it, to move it.
Oh.
That's my understanding.
Uh, no, it's on the article. Yeah, for some reason, she wanted it, the attorney wanted it on the article. Uh, no, I'm sorry.
On the ballot?
No, no, I'm sorry.
So it's just a renumbering for-
It is, yep, it's just renumbering.
We're not changing, we're not changing the-
No, no changing content or language.
Thank you, I was gonna say intent, but yes.
Oh, intent, yeah.
Just a renumbering.
Just renumbering.
So, are we looking for some sort of consensus on this?
The motion would be great.
Make a motion.
You've been doing so, so well so far, Bruce, why don't you do it?
I'll make a motion that we relocate to the proper location what is now currently Article thirteen, section three-
Three thirteen one.
One?
No, three thirteen, I'm sorry.
Three thirteen three.
Right.
To Article twenty-nine thirteen.
Second.
Discussion. Yes, we're only moving three thirteen.
So I will-
Yes.
I will put it together, and I'll send you a copy of how it's gonna look.
All in favor?
Aye.
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 Opposed? Abstained?
Yes, ma'am, you're saying?
Sorry, I'll send you a copy of how it's gonna look in the ordinance when I renumber it.
Yes.
Um, back up.
Back up?
Back up.
Uh-oh. How for?
We wanna, we're moving Article three thirteen-
Three.
Three thirteen three.
Three, what about one, two, and?
No, they have to stay there.
Okay.
That, that went with kennel, I think.
And then we need to renumber-
That discussion, I think.
Three thirteen three is specifically for the, worded towards the aquifer protection.
Yep.
First thing it says is more than ten percent impervious, and that kind of stuff.
Right, right. So then we need to renumber a three thirteen four to replace three thirteen three?
No, we should put three thirteen threes deleted and leave three thirteen four there.
Okay. So we wanna put three thirteen three, you wanna put it moved or deleted in its entirety or something?
Retitle it?
No, it says right there, it would be added, the twenty-nine, it would become twenty-nine thirteen ten.
Yeah, because I was, I was moving it.
Yes, that's, why don't you say relocated or moved to twenty-nine three, wherever you're putting it. Leave it there.
Three thirteen four?
Stays, stays where it is.
That one says it would become twenty-nine thirteen eleven. Get it the back end of that. Three thirteen four. Now it would become section twenty-nine thirteen eleven.
Yeah, but we're not moving that.
We're not moving that.
Gonna move it to that? That's already in twenty-nine thirteen eleven?
Existing non-conforming uses, three thirteen four, is that what you're moving?
Thing says it's gonna be moved.
It says would become section twenty-nine thirteen eleven.
We better back up.
Yep.
Okay.
Because your first thing, you, this thing says, placing Article three, section three thirteen three, title criteria, for granting it as used for, and just placing it to the correct section, Article twenty-nine thirteen. But then the very first thing says conditional use three thirteen one.
Three thirteen one, yeah. Becomes-
Yeah, we don't wanna move that. We don't wanna move three thirteen one, two, and four.
You just wanna move the paragraph that's no numbered behind.
We wanna move three only.
Just thirteen three, one, two, and four stay.
Because they're generic, those, those, one, two, and four are generic.
What do you mean?
To conditional use permits, to any conditional use permit.
Anything.
Right, could we give conditional use permits for driveways and aquifers, is there anything else?
I think that's it right now.
Non-conforming.
I think that's it.
So three thirteen, three thirteen one, three thirteen two, three thirteen four, stay, right where they are. The only one you're moving-
Is three thirteen three.
Three thirteen three to chapter twenty-nine.
Right.
Correct.
And that's what this says.
Yeah, that's what it says here.
That's what he voted on, yeah. But that's not what this says in the text.
Your next page doesn't say that.
No, I was re, I was renumbering the whole section of the conditional.
The whole was the twenty-ninth, yeah.
Yeah, that's what my interpretation of Craig saying it needs to be moved.
Typical female thing, she got carried away. That one for the audience, that was just for people sitting here at the table.
I ran away with that.
So we voted on it, right? No, you just don't-
Yes, you did vote on it, right.
That's true, we did.
Okay.
Yeah.
And now we're down to building codes.
Okay, now you want building codes?
Number three.
She's got a whole big thing on that.
Yeah.
Are, are these building codes?
She's got them right here.
No. Does our current ordinance refer to these codes?
No.
No.
They refer to the NFPA code.
BOKA.
In BOKA.
Which is extinct.
So-
Like a dinosaur.
NFPA isn't, but-
Couple of months ago, you received the original, the markup.
So we need one more.
I think you got some there.
No, just one.
With this, on the first hearing we had, there were some minor corrections, minor additions.
I need one more.
We got two here, sir.
Oh, there is two? Geez, I'm sorry. I couldn't, I kept, it didn't come apart.
So if this is adopted, we're imposing additional restrictions on people who build in Ware?
No.
False.
Okay, then what are we doing?
Redefining the code.
So, because I thought you just said that none of, neither these nor their predecessors were in effect in the town of Ware.
I didn't say that.
Then I misunderstood you.
Oh.
Which of these are in effect in the town of Ware?
I'm not sure what you're holding up.
Article three, it, it lists.
Yes, those, those are all the new updated codes. Prior to that, you had BOKA nineteen eighty-eight.
NFPA thirteen.
NFPA thirteen by itself, back in nineteen seventy.
Yeah, seventies.
You had all of the older codes.
But the, but this NFPA one-on-one, we adopted that.
Yeah, I don't think you changed that, I think the fire chief left it.
We adopted that a couple of years ago.
Yeah.
So that one could probably be strictly for that.
That didn't get, if you notice, there's no change on that from the old BOKA code, the older-
Let me go through these one by one. Do we currently have any version of the International Building Code in effect in Ware?
Yes.
Do we have any version of the International Plumbing Code?
Yes.
The International Mechanical Code? The Energy Conservation Code? All of these?
Yes.
So what we're doing is changing the dates.
Two thousand and eight to two twenty, uh, twenty fifteen.
I see.
Yep.
And what I don't know, and presumably none of us know, is what kind of substantive changes the newer version has that would impose additional burdens on people in Ware? I can't support this.
I, I can't even go through all of the changes that the international code makes. They make changes all the time.
But that's, that's effectively, right now, the state building code.
Correct.
That's right.
Exactly what the state has adopted.
These, this group here is what the state building code is.
Yeah, life safety building code.
Correct. It's the same as the state, you have, you, you-
Then we don't need to adapt it?
You adopted the state codes.
If this is a state building code, and if it's mandatory under state law that all towns comply with the state building code, and I don't know that's the case.
Well, they, they have to comply with them, although some towns actually have gone further than this with the next round that have already been nationally approved, just the state branch hasn't approved them yet.
Yeah, the state goes with the minimum requirements.
Right.
And right now, the minimum requirements are the twenty fifteen codes. But technically, we're still five years behind, but that's what the state adopted.
So, and what, we're effectively doing, just updating the local building code to-
To make sure that they have it right, so they can enforce them.
But she's enforcing these anyway, because that is the state building code.
But I had always understood that the state building code did not apply to a town unless the town on its own decided to adopt it.
No, it has to, it's the minimum.
But you did, but you did adopt the state code.
Even in a community with no zoning? There's a state building code.
Yes. With, with towns with no building inspectors and no permits, they still have to abide by the state building code. And that's why the state plumbing inspector and electrical inspector goes up to those towns every once in a while to see if they are abiding by the state building code.
So are you saying that it doesn't matter whether this gets adopted or not, the state building code, which includes all of these things and any updates, is in effect in the town of Ware?
Nineteen eighty-six, are you in favor of the adoption of the building code as proposed by the planning board, Article one, four hundred and thirty, yes, two hundred and twenty-eight, no?
That doesn't answer my question, that only says.
But you adopted building codes way back in early eighties.
Right, but that doesn't mean we have to adopt updates, if it's voluntary. If Bruce is correct.
It's not voluntary, this, yet this minimum, that, that, no. You can adopt further updates than this, like the, up to two thousand.
Eighteen?
Eighteen now?
I think it's eighteen.
Some towns like Durham and stuff are using eighteen.
Manchester uses it.
But, but this is the state minimum.
They adopted a lot more.
Yes, Conca, Conca uses a stricter one.
I mean, if we don't adopt anything, they need to abide by this anyway. But it's hard for her to say, what's the building code in town and we'd want.
No, all she has to do is refer to the state building code because it, it applies. If, in fact, you're correct that it is mandatory for everyone regardless of whether it's adopted.
And it has been. I mean, if you were the town without.
That's a statewide minimum building.
Yeah.
If they have updated.
In New Hampshire, yes.
Yes.
Okay.
Why are we adopting codes from back, years back though?
That's what the state's only done up to twenty fifteen, so we haven't gone beyond that.
Well, I thought I heard somebody say there are updated codes.
There's even some up far as international codes.
The state, the state hasn't adopted them yet.
Yeah, I see.
But you, some towns have. Yes.
Yeah, some of them, that's in there individually.
Could you folks explain the language and as, third line down, and as they may, may be updated in the future?
So when the state updates.
Currently exist and they may be.
We don't have to do this again.
No, but as they may be updated, right now you said there's a two thousand eighteen code and the state is using the two thousand fifteen version.
That's the minimum.
If we adopt this language, which of those two codes will be in effect? The state adopted two thousand fifteen? Or the two thousand eighteen because it's upda, updated?
Two thousand eighteen. No, it says to adopt, as soon as the state adopts.
It doesn't say anything about the state.
To adopt by reference the following nationally recognized codes.
The town of Ware adopts by reference.
As they currently exist and they may, they may be updated in the future, they may be updated.
They are, they are updated, but I agree with Neil there.
Well, he's going by what's listed as the twenty fif.
You better resign.
I think I'm gonna.
But they're going as what's listed.
I understand, I understand the point, that this, instead of saying, as they may be updated in the future, it says as they may be adopted by the state of New Hampshire in the future.
Well, again.
Really is what.
The only other thing to do is, is to throw it out because it's already been run by council and this is the second year.
No, it doesn't matter now, this, this is a building, this isn't zoning though. Right?
Yeah, that the only, this is the only article that has to go for a vote out of the building, building permit changes because if you voted it in, the codes separately.
And it says twenty fifteen, twenty fifteen, twenty fifteen, it doesn't say with, it's just open ended for a day.
All the other, all the other changes don't need to go to the vote.
I'm saying the ones that they've listed that we're going to look at to adopt, say, the, I, you know, the IBC twenty fifteen, the, you know, IPC twenty fifteen, mechanical code twenty fifteen, it doesn't say.
Well, it seems as though if at the end of that first sentence, we said, may be updated in the future by the state of New Hampshire.
Yeah, but we can't change it at the state.
Right, and not, and, and just because of, I mean, the state changes, it may be.
Doesn't necessarily mean we.
Right, and the state changes.
We'd have to bring it back.
Could change two of them, but not the other two.
Yeah, but this, this leads you, who knows what they, I mean, as they may be updated, but I'm not sure what that means.
Right, that's right. It, it, that means they could update like the two thousand eighteen now, the state hasn't adopted it yet, but they've been, but they've been updated, so maybe that, they get, they need to apply. So I understand what you're saying, yeah.
Can I ask a silly question? Was this purpose, was that published? Or is this, is this the only place it's seen?
Uh, yeah, right, nobody has it yet.
To keep update with the state codes?
Yes.
Oh yeah, you could change the purpose.
No, I mean, the purpose was not.
Nope.
Was not advertised.
Just town clerk gets it after you vote on it, she gets a copy so that when.
Cause the purpose is right.
Yes.
Code adopted by Article twenty two and nineteen eighty eight, just needed to update them to current state codes within the building permit ordinance. That's the current state code. And also to revoke the adoption of NFPA thirteen because that's now NFPA one oh one.
This is, I'm sorry, but I have to tell you that the language is very clear that if we adopt this, we will never, ever again have to do anything because this says that as these codes are updated in the future, we automatically adopt them.
We don't want to adopt these codes as each one is automatically updated. We want to adopt them as the state adopts them.
But that's, I agree with you, but that's not what this says.
I know, correct.
Since the current in the bar of purpose is the update of the current state codes.
Moreover, there's a real problem because remember the state changed one of the codes and it talks about the fire sprinklers here and one, two family.
And it says, it says right that it's no longer in effect.
No, I understand that, but that is part of the code. The state overrode it.
That's right, and it's in the administrative rules for the state, so I mean, so you fall back on that. If they change it again, then that's up, that's gonna go before the legislature.
But if we're adopting the codes.
With that error, and I don't think we can do this.
Yeah.
It's too bad. That'll have to wait till next year, I guess, but that's not the end of the world because we get, still in the state minimum anyway.
Exactly.
I'm gonna enforce them anyways.
Right, we have to, I mean, that's the state minimum code.
No, I got a question. And this is gonna be, yes.
Unless I ask the law, I'm sorry.
If we could say this is a typo and just change your colon to a comma and say.
That's what I was just gonna say.
By the state of New Hampshire.
Unless I ask her how to change it.
Well, you could talk to her.
Just change the colon to a comma and say, by the state of New Hampshire.
The intention was to follow the state.
Yeah, yeah. So how are you thinking?
Change the colon to a comma.
In the future, by the state of New Hampshire. Semi-colon.
As adopted by the state of New Hampshire.
An add?
As adopted by the state of New Hampshire.
There's a currently exist, where's the colon, where's, where's the comma?
Or may as they may be updated in the future by the state of New Hampshire, add by the state of New Hampshire.
Yeah, maybe in the future by the state of New Hampshire. Get rid of the, get rid of the colon, add by the state of New Hampshire.
Okay.
That's a typo.
Keep, oh yeah.
It's a big typo, it's, you know.
Keep the word updated or adopted?
Yeah, updated.
If I change that word, then that.
Yeah.
Just don't change any other wording, just add by the state of New Hampshire.
Just add some words.
Okay, I will double check with her to make sure.
It sounds like like twenty-five extra keystrokes you were trying to save yourself. Maybe we could swing it.
I'm pretty sure it's, it's, they, she said substantial changes, so that's just a typo.
I mean, that, that's still in, within the purpose.
And then it means the purpose.
The purpose wasn't, the purpose wasn't.
It says on the purpose.
The purpose was not added as part of the voting.
Yes, but I'm, it's.
The purpose was advertised, I don't think we'd have a problem.
Right.
Another question.
No, don't go too far here.
As they current, to, to adopt the following nationally recognized codes as they currently exist. Now.
Which is these?
No, somebody told me that one of these codes at least has a two thousand eighteen version, a later version.
They all do.
They all do.
But we haven't, the state has not adopted those versions.
And NEC is twenty seventeen.
So by adding the words by the state of New Hampshire at the end, that will mean as they currently exist by the state of New Hampshire.
They adopt them.
As they are currently adopted by the state of New Hampshire and as they may be updated in the future by the state of New Hampshire.
It's all one sentence, as they currently exist and as they may be updated in the future by the state of New Hampshire.
That's what we need it to mean.
Okay.
That's what it means today.
Yep.
Can I make the motion to revise Article three, send to the attorney for review? If the attorney says it's okay, we place it on the March ballot?
I'll second that.
With, with the words by the state of New Hampshire?
Yes, didn't I say at the beginning?
Yeah.
Yeah, okay.
I'd like to comment on that before we vote.
Discussion, yes.
Was there a sec, was there a second?
The thing that Neil brought up seems to me is kind of a kill kill off because as they currently exist, that doesn't mean, you can't, I really wouldn't say by adding the state of New Hampshire at the end, that it even applied to that.
As they currently exist, which means if this is the ones that are spelled out, that's how they currently exist now.
No, this, as they currently exist would be the, all the two thousand eighteen ones.
No, no, the state's only gone to twenty fifteen, so this is the new update, this is what they want to put in, as they currently exist.
Nationally recognized code as they currently exist.
Except by the state.
So if nationally recognized, they're not the ones the state of New Hampshire recognizes.
Or by the state of.
I'm gonna withdraw my motion.
At this point, I think we just ought to withdraw the whole article.
Yeah.
Because we can't change it anymore.
Cause, yeah, I, I think it ought to say something about to adopt the following codes and as they may be adopted by the state of New Hampshire in the future. And not say anything about currently, that sentence could be rewritten.
Wow.
A little bit better, I think, now everybody's.
This is the ones they're currently using, but.
Well, we can adopt these and as they, and as they get adopted by.
Don't wait for our motion, let's take a vote on it, we'll just downvote it.
Okay.
There's a motion on the floor.
Yeah. It was seconded.
I'll say it again.
Yeah, it was more, it was a motion, it was seconded.
Okay, I don't know if I'm supposed to do this, I'm gonna, I'm gonna make a motion to revise Article three by adding by the state of New Hampshire to the end of it, have reviewed by town council. Town council accepts it, then place it on the ballot in the town board for the town meeting in March.
And you're not worried about that other?
And I seconded it already.
You seconded, we're gonna discuss it, I'm gonna say all in favor, we're gonna say, nobody's gonna say a thing. Then we're gonna say all against, we're all gonna say we're against it. Nay.
Aye.
Aye, whatever, we're all against it, right?
Yes.
You have to say nay.
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 Abstain. Motion failed, zero to five. That was a cluster. It would have done the same thing if you weren't in the audience, by the way.
I think you were right. The state building, this, I'm reading six seventy four fifty one, the state building code established in shall be effective in all towns and cities in the state and shall be enforced. In addition, towns and cities shall have the following authority to adopt additional provisions of the state building code provided that such additional provisions are not less stringent.
Right.
That's right.
Yeah. So this is the minimum state building code.
And Neil, we had that discussion over the cisterns about being fifteen hundred gallons or three thousand gallons and we cannot be less stringent than the NFPA standards, which is.
But you, you still enforce them.
Yeah.
Where we're just updating the building permit ordinance is what we were trying to do.
The only difference is, is this gives a more clear definition as for her enforcement.
And all the other changes don't need to go to town vote, but it's still administrative changes, yeah.
Yes.
But in fact, Article three is totally unnecessary.
Well, we still have it.
No.
No, cause you adopted it that way the first time.
You've adopted it already prior to that, if you look at.
But as you said, even if we didn't adopt it.
Yeah, but we've already been on record as adopting the state, so we've got.
Maybe we should just repeal that adoption.
We were just doing.
That caused more of an issue.
Legally, the right way we were doing it.
So you're gonna change this as well?
So I gotta go back to the original on that.
Right.
Yeah. So Article four will go back to the old nineteen eighty version, whatever.
Eighty-eight version?
Eighty-eight, yeah. And then everything else.
Article twenty-two in the nineteen eighty-eight version.
Everything else gets changed, the attorney made a correction on, um.
Anyway, for those not present, we also went through this.
We did.
And the highlighted slash.
On the subdivision.
No.
The building permit. Said the attorney made a change on what?
On the building permit one, the, after you made changes on the first hearing, which you, you see in the dark section, I'm sorry.
Bond deck or fourth?
It's not, it's not colored for you, but.
Yeah, I gotta just, it's dark.
Yep, um, the sprinkler to be removed by state statute.
Yep.
That was the attorney.
Where's that?
Four, four point one four.
NFPA thirteen.
Yeah, it was in there and it, it can't be in there per state statute.
The whole thing's gone.
Right.
Okay.
Yeah. And then five point one point three.
Fee, yep.
Prior to that, you had it doubling the permit fee and the attorney said you can't place a fine which is more than the cost of the permit. It was illegal the way it was written, so we had to rewrite it at a, just a dollar amount.
Violation of.
So we chose one fifty for the first time offense.
And what are other offenses or violations in accordance with section seven one?
Seven's the last page.
Yep.
So the second offense is two seventy five?
Could be second offense, it could be corporation.
Yeah, guilty of felony, that's, other than a natural person.
Which is the same RSA that, that's in all of your ordinances, that's six seventy six, colon seventeen.
Kelly, are we saying that four one four is being eliminated, is that what that says?
Yes.
Oh, okay.
And all of those are administrative changes, which is by the planning board. It, the very first time you adopted building permit ordinance, it did go to the selectmen for review, so I guess that would be Jack taking it and saying, this is how we're changing it.
What's that? The.
Very first time you adopted it.
Yep.
Was to the selectmen, so.
It's already, you know, I'll update them.
Do you have a thing on here about removing the septic reviews?
It's no, it's not in writing anywhere.
Oh, okay.
I don't.
They just do it, huh?
I just guess they just did it.
What's that, refuse?
Same as.
Septic plan reviews?
Chip used to do all that.
She wants to get out of the business.
Article four.
We want to get rid of it.
Yeah, we want to get rid of it.
Not anywhere, so.
Kelly, Article four, you're gonna make, you're gonna make the changes?
That's going back to the original, BOKA, KBO.
Septic reviews, we were talking about, for some reason, the town of Ware is on the list by the state that you need a local approval prior to submitting to the state.
Yep, but there's nothing.
But she can't find anything in writing that says we have to do it?
No, but, but it went to the selectmen to say to do it.
So she can go back to the selectmen and say, don't do it.
You know, I never had one that came before the, you know, that I remember, but it must have been way before.
But the select.
Everett started doing it.
Yeah.
Right, so the selectmen have to unauthorized the building.
Well, I know that was one of Chip's things, I mean.
Yeah, and everybody kept saying, I kept asking Chip, why are we doing this, because it's for the fifteen dollars.
But I mean, my, my question used to be, would you have somebody, do you know what you, do you know when they come out and do the inspection like bed bottom, do you know what you're looking at? Well, no, not really.
But the bed bottom, we still want to do.
But I'm saying, a lot of them would do the plan review and do, you know what you're looking at? No, not really.
No, they don't.
No, but the, but the bed bottom and septic is all part of your building permit.
Right.
So that's okay.
But I mean, the funny thing is, sometimes they'd come out and look at bed bottom and go, oh, that looks good, do you even know what you're...
Oh, yes, sometimes come out and witness your test pit, and you dig the hole, and they walk out and say, see how water comes right there? I said, yep, okay, and he walks away.
Yeah, we don't, we don't witness test pits either.
No.
Well, they do in some places.
Oh, yeah.
Now, they did, they came out, and every time they came out and witnessed a test pit, it charged them fifty bucks.
Kyle only works two days a week, so...
Go.
Deering does. Deering wouldn't do it.
Oh, did, yeah, he worked three different jobs.
Can't remember his name now.
Mike.
Yeah.
Mike.
Mike.
Yep.
He was mad, he was still digging the second pit when he got there.
Oh.
You don't have it all dug, what are you doing?
Oh, yeah, exactly.
So are we, um, on subdivisions now?
Proposed changes?
Wait a second, what's happening to this?
What's what?
Well, I guess we gotta vote on it, don't we?
Oh, yeah, did you vote on it?
No, we did not vote on it.
Well, yeah, you voted not to put the article in the town board.
So, yeah, so let's say...
Do we need to vote to approve the...
We need to vote to approve the building, building ordinance.
Oh, okay, sorry.
Right?
Yeah.
As, as it's gonna be revised.
Okay.
So I'm making a motion to approve...
Revised building...
Draft, draft the revised building permit ordinance dated one three two thousand twenty, with the following revisions, revise Article four point one to the current approved building codes, and deleting Article four point one point four. Second. Discussion. Well, nobody's gonna...
I had to have a question, is, is any of this language different from what we have now?
Yes, did you not get your mock-up, did you want to be a mock-up, your mock, 'cause this, build this ordinance used to be, I don't know, twenty pages.
Well, I'm looking at four one three, the language there is obtuse, and that's putting it gently.
This was your building permit ordinance right here.
Yeah, I, we got that copy.
Okay, so this, so this is the mock-up.
And that's the new one in your hand, Neil.
The new one is in your hand.
You've knocked twenty pages down to four?
Yeah.
Well, I mean, this is...
Pretty much.
Pretty much, yeah.
Pretty much.
Well, you got a gold star.
No, because there's, there's four pages of house numbering, which you're not changing, so the lawyer said, don't even add it into any other proposals. And then there was, um, well, I'm sorry.
There's more than this, there's the fees, fees are in there.
The fees are in there, um, you, you guys changed a couple of definitions on barn, pole barn, and stuff like that, um, so they had six pages of fee list, like this.
Okay.
So that's all been eliminated because we're going with a square footage fee list.
The fees were by outlet, by window, and by...
Toilet.
Right.
You'd have two outlets, so...
It would cost you more to count how much the fee was, and the...
So this, I'm sorry, this current was seventeen pages, not twenty.
Could you translate four one three into English? Adoption of the National Fire Prevention Code, why doesn't it just say that?
I don't know, but I don't think I changed any of those.
That a certain document, three copies of which are in file in the town clerk's office, and in the code, uh, office of the building department, being marked and designated as fire prevention co...
I'm not gonna say what I'm thinking, I'll be on TV and people will be mad at me.
Yeah, I don't, I don't have nothing, I didn't change any of the fire department ones.
The public documents, if you put something in public...
I would think somebody was able to take seventeen and create four out of it, would've had the ability to take eight lines and put it into one.
It was, um, it was their article, and I, I asked if they wanted any changes.
Yeah.
They declined.
So, yeah, but let me just, let me just double check before I say, 'cause it's a different number here, so which one are you talking about?
Four one three.
No, no, which, uh...
Adoption of the National Fire Prevention Code.
Fire Prevention Code. Yes, that a certain document, three copies of which are on file in the office, blah blah blah.
Yes.
Unchanged.
Unchanged, it's written just like this.
Yes.
And so is, so is four one two.
I can work on it for next year.
I'd just say that we've adopted A, B, and C, and just straightforward so that people aren't...
I can do that.
We have a motion on the table, any more discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Opposed, abstain. Woo-hoo.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yep.
So this is finished?
Yes.
Ta-da.
Fodder.
Now we're gonna get the deal worked up.
Yeah, well, what's this one?
Subdivision?
Kelly, I take it that only the highlighted, all changes are highlighted?
Um, yes, on your, the, the page on the front tells you exactly, there's four changes in the subdivisions, and then I gave you the pages that they're changing to.
So what you've given us already has a change in it.
Is it, is it highlighted or colored? Mine's colored, but yours is not.
Yeah, mine's highlighted, I don't, I got yellow highlight.
I don't have a colored printer.
Yeah, see, that was red or something, but so...
Yeah, well...
I say that every meeting for a reason, I don't have a colored printer, so...
Talk.
The other, the other one, the person is...
Go up and talk to the town administrator and see if you can put it forward a little bit.
I'll buy another highlighter.
Oh.
I'll buy a multi-colored one.
Multi-colored highlighter?
Pink.
There we go, yeah.
Yellow one, blue one.
We're, we're helping to pay for that printer, you know?
Thank you, thank you.
Just thinking of you, that's all. My first comment is, the fire chief wants the utility should be underground, well, I don't have a problem with that.
In the dead end road developments, yeah?
I think it should be underground everywhere, but that is Article two point five, active and substantial development completion is not the place to put that.
Okay, so I put it where I first saw utilities, but then my suggestion was to put it under eight ten, which I did, so I u, I did both, just in case, but you can tell me where...
All right with being redundant in that point.
Well, it has nothing to do with active substantial development, that they're underground or overhead, they need to be installed and energized, that's the active substantial.
And I don't know if the word dead end is the right word.
I think we ought to do it for all roads, all, all, all new roads. Yep. For several reasons.
Yeah.
Eight ten is, eight ten is under the...
What page are you on?
Thirty-five.
Yep.
It's not there.
Yeah.
Well, maybe it is.
I'm just looking at the one that she's clipped up for us.
Yeah, so page three and page thirty-five both say that utilities should be underground with any dead end roads in the subdivision.
Yep.
But if you only want it in one, or you want it in several, for some reason, I, that was the first one I saw about utilities, so... It's up to you.
I, I agree with you, Craig, just make it all utilities shall be underground, period.
I knew Bruce was gonna say something about this.
No, the only thing I wanna say is, I wanna just make sure that we're clear that this is only for new roads, someone does a development along an existing frontage road, they don't have to bury all the utilities if they gotta put new utilities in.
It says, prior to any new road construction.
Yeah.
Well, it says dead end road development, I...
The highlighted, I would say the highlighted comes right out of there.
What, what page are you on?
Thirty-five.
Thirty-five.
Okay.
Instead of what you have highlighted, just say, oh, utilities shall be underground. Period.
Shall?
Shall.
No dead end road or anything?
Nope, no.
Are you in Section eight ten, right?
Yes.
And also on page three...
Page three, do not add that.
C, says utilities shall be underground and dead end development.
I know, I, I put it there first, and then Craig weighed in and said he wants it in ten, so we can take that out.
Coming right out.
Yeah, 'cause that's under active substantial development, that's not where you...
Sorry, Jack, I was mad, I left it in there just in case.
That's what I wanted to say, now it has to get...
I didn't trust Craig, no.
Right.
It was only one opinion, I wanted all of you to know.
Well, you're trying to get in my good sight tonight, aren't you?
Okay.
I'm under a lot of stress right here.
Page four is fine.
Yeah.
How about the cisterns on nine?
I don't understand what he's doing there. Let me blunt about that.
I know what he's doing.
What?
He's, he's sizing the cistern, which is, and he's doing it right, he's sizing the cistern based on the structures being protected by it.
Yeah.
Based on the use of the structure and the size of the structure.
Which is, he's following the...
Which is what NFPA requires.
Yeah, he's following the NFPA code.
Great, that's fine, read B and C.
No cistern shoe consistent of less than fifteen thousand gallon capacity.
Because in the commercial development way, like, you'd say it's like a Lancaster Plaza, for example, if something new like that were to go in, it may not need a thirty thousand gallon cistern, it may only need a fifteen thousand. So he's just saying, in all, in any case, it's gotta be at least fifteen thousand, even if the NFPA requires it only be ten. That's what he's saying by that.
Okay, so if we have ten houses, we can do a fifteen thousand gallon?
If he, if they size it based on...
If we're doing a subdivision, you're not sizing anything.
Well, he may, I don't know if NFPA just says blanket thirty thousand gallon for a five lot subdivision, I don't know, 'cause five lots is it, four is okay, five is the kicker, right?
This says twelve, so he's saying thirty thousand gallons or twelve or more, so if we're doing ten...
Twelve, have a minimum of thirty thousand gallons, where twelve or more new lots are being subdivided, so below that...
So if I do a subdivision with ten, can I do fifteen thousand?
Yeah. And if that's what NFPA says, that, that's what he's, I mean, he's spoken by NFPA.
And if you do under five...
Don't get any.
Yeah, I don't, I don't read it that way, I think this is a minimum, I think what he's saying is, I'm gonna tell you how big it has to be, but no matter what it, what my calculation comes out to...
The minimum is fifteen.
The minimum is fifteen?
Fifteen, yeah, absolutely.
That's what it's saying.
But the minimum could be twenty-two or twenty-eight.
Yes.
Depending on what he sizes it at.
And this, and for a twelve plus unit development.
It's gonna be thirty.
Thirty, even if it only requires fourteen.
Right.
And why do we want that?
They want it to be able to put a fire out.
Able to fire off.
And that NFPA, that's NFPA requirement.
And it's, yeah.
Fifteen and thirty?
Yeah.
Every, all cistern sizing, it's, it's gone into NFPA, so any, like, if you're gonna build this building, requires a cistern, it might only require a seven thousand gallon cistern.
But we're getting a fifteen.
Exactly.
Most times, they all are gonna be thirty, but...
But he's, he's going, he's following NFPA guidelines, he's starting at fifteen and going up from there. There's a lot of buildings, a shopping plaza and stuff, you're actually standing on top of the cistern, the cistern's underneath the floor.
Yeah, underneath the hole.
Right.
You drive on it when you pull in, a lot of them.
Under E, on, on the seventh, sixth line down, it says, the word is development, do we need to say subdivision?
No, any site development, that's why you use the word development as opposed to subdivision.
It's a broader...
It's a broader term.
Yeah, the development could be commercial.
Like Remellard down there, he didn't do a subdivision, but it's a development.
And if you had another, like, B and B lane.
But, but E says, "An acceptable firefighting water supply system, i.e. cistern, shall be installed on land subdivided into three or more new lots." So if I don't subdivide, does that mean that I don't have to comply with this?
No, because it's a development, that's where you got you, is, is the development, are you still developing?
But it wouldn't, it wouldn't come before the planning board, well, site, site review.
But, but this not only comes before the planning board, this is also part of the building permit process.
And through the fire, you know, fire inspection has to be...
So you're comfortable that this language would cover a Remellard type development, or a Lancaster type development?
Any of them.
That's it, we got it.
We know, there's a problem here, because you subdivide lots, it's one thing, if you don't build houses on them, why do you need assistance?
You, you don't, and under this, you wouldn't have to build one, it says, "The fire department shall calculate the cistern capacity, if you're not building anything," based on hazards, if you're not building anything, there's no hazard.
No hazard, if you have less than five houses, you don't need one, in a, in a subdivision.
Less than three?
No, less than five.
It says three up in the beginning.
Be here, but I thought we had five.
That's what we did too.
Yeah, that's what we did.
It says three, three or more new lots.
Yeah.
And there's no, that three isn't not a change, is it?
That didn't even look like it's new text, that was old text, no?
The three lots is, is not changed.
No, not that I...
Okay, then maybe three lots, so if you have less, three or less, then you're all set, if you have four or more, then...
And you're saying, if they're just subdivided, they don't need cisterns? If you're not building on it, if you're not building on it.
If you don't build on them, no.
Where does it say that?
It does, but you don't need the cistern until you get a CO.
Yeah.
Okay.
Usually.
Yeah.
Yeah, the first house that gets a CO needs to have that cistern in function.
Like, like Cortland Estates, they could build, but they couldn't get a CO until that cistern was there.
So if you had a ten lot subdivision and you built one house, you need a cistern for ten.
Before they can move in.
Yeah.
Yeah, okay.
Or now...
And that was the hangup down there, there was no cistern, and he was looking for COs in the beginning, and it wouldn't do it till the cistern was now approved.
So, I mean, he's doing it right here, he's making it, um, it's not just some random arbitrary number, it's use, it's size for the use.
Yeah, and he's doing it right, from what NFPA, the state adopted, so, yeah, he's following that right to the letter. You could have an acceptable dry hydrant, you know, if you had a river or a pond or something like that, which we have a few of those around.
And the last one was...
Hang on, don't go away from that one yet, don't, don't go there, 'cause Neil's gonna get all worked up on that last, we're gonna be on it forever, so, hang on.
It kinda bothers me that we have this in Article four, general plan requirements. And I think it should at least state some of these things in Article, whatever the word is, eight point thirteen, fire protection, cistern specifications.
I think that's why I decided to put it.
It says nothing about thirty thousand, thirty thousand gallons in, in eight thirteen.
Put it in there.
Or, or something that says C, section...
Yeah, or refer to C section.
The other thing that bugs me is that...
Because it's gonna be part of the permitting process, so you have to have it there.
Right.
It's spelled out.
Wait, wait, what are you at, are you at specifications?
Eight thirteen, fire protection, cistern specifications, yes.
Maybe we take the size right out of there, because the specification is constructive.
Well, it says, it has to have a delivery, capable of delivering a thousand gallons a minute, it's gotta be fifteen thousand, yeah.
That's what I'm saying, we take the size right out of there, the thousand gallons a minute's still applicable.
I don't know if the rest of this is still applicable or not, I wouldn't, I was hoping he would go through eight point thirteen and see what he wanted to change, it appears he did not.
What page are you on, Craig?
It says fifty, page thirty-six is where it starts.
Fire protection.
'Cause then it goes, in one spot, it says, "The cost to review those cistern plans..."
Well, if, number three is still okay, it's still the minimum size, he's, he's still got that in there.
Yeah, it's kinda misleading, but yes. Okay, go to number forty-three, on page forty-two. These, these are the ones that Chip and I talked about years, years ago.
You looking at eight thirteen, fire protection, cistern specification?
I think that fifteen thousand gallon oughta come right out of there, you say cistern.
Cistern number three?
Forty-three.
But then the next sentence doesn't make sense, "Larger cisterns will be determined on a case-by-case basis."
Well, it could be lost, where are you?
Page forty-two.
Which is the old one.
Section forty-three.
Yes, that's where I am next.
That's 'cause he's talking about the...
I go back and forth more times.
Um, this is something that we adopt, right?
Yes.
I've got this one, this stuff from twenty seventeen, is that the one you're reading?
I've asked him three times.
Well... No, no, no.
'Cause Chip was complaining about the, the fee to, the, the inspection fee to review the plans is set at five hundred bucks. If they come back with bad plans ten times, it's still five hundred bucks.
You, you need to review this to make sure that the cistern description is in the right place, or maybe Kelly reviews it and tries to make the thing coherent. Nobody's, nobody's disagreeing on particulars, it's just...
A few sections like that.
I think you could just end forty-three right at the end of the first sentence.
I think I can shrink it down to two pages.
If you take forty-three and just end it, "The developer is responsible to pay for the costs incurred, the planning board to review the plans," period.
Okay, what are you gonna do with forty-six, 'cause that's a fee another, somebody else went over on. And these are the only, these are the only ones that I, I heard about from Chip, there may could be other problems in this whole thing that I don't know about, those are, those are the two I heard about.
Well, I think forty-six can be, the, before commencement, "The developer shall, shall place an initial deposit."
Right, that's what I was looking for.
If we start, if we call it first deposit, just an initial deposit, instead of being...
Yeah, yeah, I think we're safe.
But while you're here, if you're interested in the planning board, we have this thing called a voluntary...
I wrote his name down so I could...
Okay. A little voluntary forward.
Yes.
You could join the board and be here every, twice a month, and join us.
Well, I...
We have many openings.
I, I wouldn't mind that, except my job takes me away a lot.
We don't care.
You have alternates, right?
Yeah, we, no, we don't have any alternates, that's my point.
I mean, you have a point, you have...
Yeah, we need alternates.
Yeah, well, send me some info. Yeah.
Did you get your email address?
I don't have email address, but I think I'll go ahead.
You wish you didn't come here.
Rule of the day.
I've spoken with you before, yeah.
I think we just insert the word initial.
We need, we need some fresh blood over here.
I think I usually don't have to have your phone number.
That invitation extends to both of you, it's not just for one.
Yes.
That's why I said both of them.
Yeah, either, not, not both, one or the other.
Well, ZBAs want members too.
Oh, a husband and wife in the board, well, I'm assuming they're husband and wife, that could be a bad assumption, I'm sorry.
Why not?
It's a right of self.
That'd be weird.
Yeah. It's, it's not illegal, but...
I didn't say it was illegal, but it's weird.
No, it's...
Volunteer is volunteer.
Yeah.
Yeah, I mean, as you go down the rest of the thing, it says, "Shall additional sums over the thirty-five hundred escrow be necessary, the final acceptance of the cistern shall be withheld until outstanding bills are paid." shall be withheld until outstanding bills are paid. So, the last sentence with that, forty-six...
I understand.
leaves room for more.
I understand that.
That's eight.
So I'm not too worried about forty-six. I mean, if you wanna clarify by playing an initial deposit or something.
My point is, I don't have any idea.
I've got another one that this is...
The only thing I could do is take more options, I don't know when this one is, I'll go look at this one.
That's what I would do if I were to do it. This was adopted in two thousand six.
Is good for that section.
You're sitting on the board.
Subdivision Regulations, right here.
Yeah, and then I've got another one, this one's dated ten twelve of seventeen.
That should be a good one.
This is the one we're going for now, right?
What are you looking at?
Subdivision?
That's the one I have.
The one I have is thirteen of eighteen, December, December thirteenth, two thousand eighteen, subdivision regulations.
I got the ones from twenty seventeen.
Eighteen, December eighteen.
Okay, those are the ones I don't have, no.
Did you make any changes in seventeen?
Oh, I'm just looking at the pages like you were talking, I mean...
The very last page under amendments, you'll see if there's anything in seventeen.
Very first page inside it.
But these are the last ones I got, and it's...
Hey Chuck, you signed this...
Like, you're talking about page thirty-six for the cisterns, I've got it on page thirty-seven.
You signed it right here.
Yeah, you signed it.
No, I didn't. That's what I was looking, I'm saying, this is what I got.
So we got a page problem.
You need to clean out, why don't you bring your binder in the office and let me clean it?
I got so many damn binders, I can't keep up with them half the time.
I should, I should just make all new binders.
I think on forty-three, Craig, we just eliminate to that, cut it right down to that first sentence and leave it like that, take everything else out. We don't need to put a dollar amount in there, we don't need any of that, because that, if they do a crappy job, it could cost them five thousand dollars to get the plans reviewed.
That's what happened with the old, that's what happened.
Yes.
Not bad, but it was worth five hundred.
On forty-three, I think Bruce is right, that can be eliminated.
My point is, I haven't gone through this, I don't know enough about cisterns, I know what the town requires and say here, you have to meet Article, yabba dabba, right in the plan, you gotta meet Article such and such, that's all I do. As a surveyor, I don't care, all I care about is where it is in the map, so I lay it out and tell them where to build it.
Bruce, do you know why forty-six requires a thirty-five hundred dollar escrow deposit before...
Yeah, for the inspectors to walk there and look at the thing and be there when they're building it.
Make sure, yeah, when they're setting it, mm.
And the last sentence of that, the last sentence of that paragraph covers any overrun.
Yeah, because I mean, when they go to put one in, usually it's already precast.
If they're doing it, if they do a decent job of it...
Ah, that, that's your problem, right there.
Doing a decent job.
If they do a decent job, right.
All depends on who it is.
But they have to read that whole paragraph to realize, I'm not gonna get out of it for just thirty-five hundred dollars.
If the precast is gonna come in one, one piece.
One or two pieces, yeah, depending on how big it is.
Certain number, come in, come in three pieces and then...
You gotta bolt them together and seal them.
Yeah.
How does the inspection work? Is the inspector there literally during the entire construction process?
You've got somebody there looking at it before the crane puts it in to see if the bottom's right.
It's kinda subjective, it depends on how the guy's doing. If the inspector spends a couple days there and realizes the guy's doing things right, not trying to cut corners, then he may leave for a couple hours a day, and then as things progress and he realizes things are going pretty good, he may not, he, at the end of the day, he probably doesn't have to be there every middle of the day, but sometimes in some conditions, he may wanna be. Or if you have a bad site that's wet, where they have water problems, he may wanna be.
You definitely wanna be there before the cistern's there to make sure it's compact.
When it's set, he's gotta be there, when they put it together, he's gotta be there.
Because I had to, I had to do the hole for him, and then they came, and I had to wait till the inspector said, yeah, it's all right, and I didn't have to do any more blasting for it, and then they, and, and the contractor was there, the concrete precast people were there to make sure that it would fit and not hit any sides or anything where it could damage it, and then I had to wait until they actually set the, the first piece in there, and set it, and he, you know, they watched the whole thing, and the crane's there, and that's, that's a big money operation.
And, and every phase of it requires an inspector to be present.
Yeah, usually it's...
You just can't inspect it when it's finished.
Some of it's not just, you may have an engineering, a town engineer, an inspector will do it, but a lot of these, I've been there, and it's some, an inspector from the fire department.
Third-party inspector.
Yeah, you'll have a, you'll have the fire department, a code officer from the fire department will do it in a lot of these towns.
Usually if it's a town employee though, you're not paying for the inspection fees?
Well, sometimes the fire departments will pay...
It's peanuts though compared to that.
They'll do a detail rate to have them come out and do it, or whatever, outside of, they have to be there for the whole time they set it. Certain ones, they do certain, certain, it depends on the size, what it's for.
If they overdig the hole, they gotta do a compaction test when they fill it back in, there's all kinds of things that go wrong.
Yeah, they had to do that.
Would it make sense to word this generally so that the estimated cost of the inspection, as determined by the building inspector, shall be put down as a deposit, et cetera?
No, I don't think we oughta do an estimated cost at all, because things can fluctuate wildly, based on the site, based on the contractor, based on the kind of cistern in the building, they put in a fiberglass tank where it all comes all put together, they set it in the hole, I mean, it's different than if they have to assemble something in the hole.
Then if it's a concrete cast one, that may come in two pieces, a top and a bottom, you know.
There's, there's a lot of variables.
And that requires different amounts of inspection?
Yes.
And you can't estimate in advance what the inspection cost is gonna be?
I don't think we need, I don't think we wanna get into doing that.
I don't think you wanna get into that.
That's why you want an absolute figure.
Yeah. I think we oughta just a thirty-five dollar initial, thirty-five dollar initial deposit, and then...
An escrow is a pretty...
And then they have to make sure that everything's paid before they get the CO for the thing. Or the, or the final sign-off on it, what do they call it?
Once it's approved, then the town takes custody of it.
I think the only thing we do is maybe clarify that that initial deposit is just an initial deposit, it's not the whole deposit.
So the cistern bond, cistern escrow account is separate from the rest of the escrow account?
Yes. The inspection account is.
Okay.
That's, what that does is it breaks it out separately.
Yeah, it does, I know, I didn't, but make sure we wanted it that way, okay?
I think Bruce, the language that will solve your problem on forty-six is to insert the words, the developer shall, and then after shall and before deposit, make an initial deposit.
In the escrow account.
Yeah, yeah, I think that's all we gotta do.
Everything else stays the same.
Yeah.
What page is that?
Forty-two.
Forty-two.
Can I, can I suggest we make the last sentence bold?
What's the section, just in case?
Forty, number forty-six.
Additional funds over the thirty-five hundred dollars escrow be necessary.
Make that bold.
Last sentence bold?
Yeah.
I would like that, just so some people can't say they didn't see that.
Okay.
You know who I'm talking about.
And then insert after, on the first line, the developer shall, insert make an initial.
Yeah, I think, you know, same page, number forty-three, we're gonna eliminate the second and third sentence.
Limit everything but the first, leave the first sentence, eliminate the rest of it.
Whoa, which one?
Forty-three.
Forty-three.
On page forty-two.
Yeah.
Yes.
Wait a minute. Section forty-three, leave the first sentence, delete sentence two and three.
Yep, delete the rest of it.
Okay. And then what did you decide on the, his, his language for cisterns, because you were going back and forth, that's the bottom line.
Leave it.
Yeah, we'll just take it like it is.
The way that I have it written?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yep.
Those two decided that. Those two decided that.
I think the entire subdivision regulations needs to be looked at.
You said you could get it down to two pages.
We just did that.
No, I did, the specifics were the, the cistern, the road width.
I mean, we just did that.
Oh.
Yeah, two years ago.
Oh, two years ago.
The whole thing.
We did?
Yeah, Jack signed it, Jack signed it, remember?
Yeah.
December two thousand eighteen.
Yeah.
Not even two years ago.
Okay, anything else, let's move on.
So we wanna leave this thing in page thirty-six saying the cistern must have minimum use capacity of fifteen thousand gallons.
Yes.
Yep, and not say anything about being sized per NFPA yabba dabba, eleven forty-two.
Well, what, what section is it, I'll ask the chief, maybe he didn't look at that one, is that the eight thirteen?
I'm sure he probably knows it, because he's...
Yeah, it's eight thirteen.
He's a stickler for that, so.
Number three.
Leave or revise?
But this, this, it's just, it's, it's repetitious, but it doesn't change anything.
No, exactly.
No.
It's misleading.
Why is it misleading?
I don't think it's misleading.
If I don't see, if I don't see, if I don't see page nine, and I'm reading eight point one-three, Fire Protection Cistern Specifications, I would think that that section would have everything I need to know about fire cistern.
You know what we could do on that number three, Craig?
What if they both refer to each other?
The purpose of that number three is to say that the usable capacity of cistern has to be available through the suction piping.
Yeah.
Regardless of the capacity. So I think we could put the rated capacity of the cist, usable, usable capacity of the cistern must be available through the suction piping system.
Well, how else is it gonna be available?
And that's, and some of that comes right out of the standard.
Twenty thousand gallon cistern, but you can only suck eighteen thousand gallons out of it, because there's so much head, or the, or the intake is three feet off the bottom of the tank.
Yeah, it's a foot off the bottom or whatever, because of the, you can't have it right on the bottom.
That's what that's saying, is whatever is, just because the tank holds twenty thousand gallons, doesn't mean you get twenty thousand gallons out of it.
Well, I know that, I realize that.
And I think that's, that's more the, what the specifications...
And that's what he's trying to, that's what that sentence is trying to say.
I know that.
So I don't think we need, I don't think we need the gallons there.
Why in page nine are we telling them how to calculate the size of the cistern, and then on page thirty-six, where we have the specifications for the cistern, we're saying it has to be fifteen thousand gallons?
That's just, it has to be available through the suction piping.
That's what it's saying.
Yes, it is.
It's saying fifteen thousand gallons.
That's what I'm saying, take the gallons out.
Then, then what?
The rated capacity.
Then the specifications don't tell you how big the cistern has to be.
That, that, that...
They'll have to refer to the other one.
That's specifications.
Yeah, specifications.
Jack says refer to page...
To go to eight thirteen from, the other one from, uh, page nine.
And refer to each other.
Yeah, refer back and forth, as also seen in...
You shouldn't be reading just one sentence, you should be reading the whole subdivision.
That's right.
But some people don't, Greg knows that, so...
Yeah, yeah.
You could refer to each other.
What's that, something E, whatever that is, E?
Whatever that, what's, what's that, uh...
I would prefer to take A, A through G and stick it in eight point thirteen and get rid of it on page nine.
What, what, say that again?
Okay, page nine.
Page nine.
Firefighting, water supply...
Take that whole E section?
Where you have the highlighted, where the chief added that stuff.
I don't have it front.
That's, that's four point one, subdivision approval, that comes under the whole subdivision approval, right?
Firefighting, put a period after original lot, I think that oughta be left right where it sets. Put the rest of it on, on under eight point thirteen.
You gotta take the whole thing, from subdivision approval required, and it lists down everything that's needed, and I think that you have to leave that right where it sets on page nine. Start at, start at the beginning on page eight.
And move all of this to where?
Hang on. That lists the, the, just general plans and requirements.
General plans, yeah, general plans, you need a cistern.
Right, and that's part of that one on page nine.
The general thing is you need a cistern. It doesn't say how big it is.
But you could also...
Generally, you need a road and you need a cistern.
Put, put in that, then refer to the other one. Just put an easy notation instead of rewriting the...
Okay, put a period after original lot, see Article eight point thirteen.
Yeah, and do it that way, that cleans it up a lot easier, yeah, a lot easier, and then...
Because we say twenty-two hundred feet in both places, we're saying all this crap in both places.
So, if that way they miss it on one, they sure as hell got it in the other.
So you're saying leave it, just refer, no?
Yeah, make them refer to each other.
Put a period after original lot, put see Article eight point thirteen.
Yeah, and that way...
Then all that stuff goes into eight thirteen.
And that way you're...
Right?
And that way you're not, you know, there's, there's no, there's no missing it, you're not gonna say, oh, I never saw that, well, if you didn't see it, then, you know...
And what, what page does the specs go to refer to?
Thirty-six, thirty-six.
Nine and thirty-six are the two pages in question.
See Article thirty, what's the article on page thirty?
Eight thirteen.
Eight thirteen.
And what's the article on page nine?
Four one.
Four one, E.
Yeah, four one E.
Okay, so the specification should have A through G, but both sections, four point one and eight point thirteen, should refer to each other.
Right, so in other words, you know, you're cleaning it up, but...
I'll, I'll revise it the way that I think I'm hearing it.
I don't think eight point thirteen has to reference four point one.
Four point one?
No, it's not gonna say anything, except for the three lots.
Are we, are we absolutely certain that E one, A through, I guess E, is exactly the same, doesn't contradict?
G.
A through G. On the chief's new, the new G.
Oh, A through, okay, the new G.
Yeah.
That there's no contradiction or conflict in language between that and what's on page thirty-six?
Twenty-two hundred feet, fifteen thousand, thousand, no, that, yeah, no. The only...
Thirty thousand's new, the year round's new.
I didn't see any contradiction, but I was relying on the fire chief to give me that information.
Available, yeah, so in other words, you can get to the cistern year round, so in other means, it's gonna be clear as snow.
It's gonna be maintained, it's correct.
Maintain, yeah, and that, that comes, once it's approved...
And the other thing that refers to that year round thing is if you got a fire hydrant and the pond's only got a foot of water in the bottom of it, you can't get enough water out of it.
The pipe, that means that the dry hydrant, the pipe's probably above the water line at that point, yeah. I definitely think we have many of those left, and I don't think we have that many in town.
When you put a dry hydrant, you, you don't put a dry hydrant into a cistern, do you?
No.
You put a dry hydrant down into a pond, or a river...
So how do you get the water out of a cistern? You put your hose?
Same way you get a dry hydrant, you gotta pump it out with the engine.
It's a pipe, same thing with a dry hydrant.
And you take the hose from the fire truck and put it into the cistern?
No, there's a connection right there.
There's a connection and it has suction.
You only got, you need about a five-foot piece of pipe between the truck and the pipe, the inlet, the outlet of the tank.
They have a piece of, they have a hose right on it, they hook right into it.
Let's assume, as you said, Bruce, a tank had a twenty thousand gallon capacity, but only eighteen thousand was usable because...
Yeah, because you got pipes off the bottom.
Right. Could, could the fire department, in an emergency, pick up that extra two thousand gallons by dropping a suction hose into the cistern and pulling it out?
They could drop a foot valve down the bottom of it, yeah.
Yeah, they could drive, they could drive a suction...
But that takes time, I mean, they stop pumping water and they still got a thousand gallons of water in the tank, they're gonna, by the time they get, they're gonna pop the cover off them and they start pumping out of it anyway, to see how they're doing with the water.
Yeah, so they could drop a suction hose literally right to the bottom of it, it'll probably be an inch off the bottom at that point.
Yeah.
But, you know, and then on top of that, they, most of these engines have got a fifteen hundred gallon tank built into them, so, which is for their initial attack.
So where are we, Craig?
I just read some things, I got confused, but... What about eight point eight on page thirty-four?
Is there a change for that one?
Yep.
Which is...
Five, oh my gosh.
That's where the problem was.
Eight point eight.
How come you have so many sections?
I don't see that in the list.
And number two, why could that even be there? It's already in the other section.
That's what I mean, it's, it's like...
Same with that four. Why is that section even there when it's on that other, page forty-three?
Why is section eight point eight there at all?
Should we move it?
Did you have that in your list? I didn't even see it, so...
No.
That's where the problem was, because you read eight point eight, four B.
Yeah.
And four, and then two, that was the problem.
Yeah, I see that, it's just a blanket thirty-five hundred dollars, which, and the five hundred dollars, yeah, those need to come out.
Or reworded.
No, I think we only wanna have it in one place, we don't need to have it redundant places.
Is that redundant, eight point eight?
Well, it's in fire protection.
Because that same stuff is on page forty-three, that we're just talking about.
On page thirty-four, it refers to eight thirteen.
Yeah, I know, that's why I found it. Cistern specifications.
Maybe the, maybe the headlines are not identified properly.
Instead of...
You know, if it says specifications on one thing.
So, so we've got stuff dealing with cisterns in three separate locations.
Right, because of your, because of the category that you're reading under, if you're reading under specifications, or you're reading under standards.
Yeah, but you got eight eight.
Escrow, you're reading under permits, you've got too many...
Yeah, and we're, and we're talking about taking all that stuff out of the E thing, and it goes along with, there's a one, then there's a two, then there's a three and a four and a five.
It's almost like it's disorganized as far as chapters, headline.
Yeah, I agree with Neil.
Some, somebody needs to go over this and rationalize it, I don't think we as a committee can do it.
No, not, not sitting here.
Right.
No, let me, let me see if I got some time to play with it.
Yeah, that eight eight and eight thirteen could be a single section.
I would think so.
Let me separate the sections.
There is, there is important stuff in.
Let me see if I can.
Four, eight eight, and eight thirteen.
But we at least wanted to get that new information in on fire assistance now, and then.
Yeah.
Work on it.
Okay.
We're under no time pressure on this, right?
No, no.
No, no, this is just planning board, this is.
This is just housecleaning.
It's, Neil, it started when, um, they wanted to change the road width. And we said we might as well revise the subdivision, so.
And we knew that cistern language was.
And the cistern language was.
Yep.
But you don't have a certain time limit to do it.
Okay. Let's, yes, we put the cistern off until February, right? Okay.
I'll look at it in the meantime, see where it comes.
Last one, at least, now Neil can get upset.
Actually, I, I have just one thing for, for Jack, because we talked.
We were done with some of these.
We, uh, yeah, we gotta, I gotta give you about five more minutes, and I'm leaving.
That's all I need.
I gotta get up at five, at four AM, to be to work at five.
I only need one second.
Don't you feel bad for you? Uh-huh. I know.
Go ahead, take his five minutes.
On the classic?
It's before the board now, the review for next week.
The discussion on the actual procedure of how we're going to handle private roads and classics roads.
There's been a discussion, I can tell you, there's been a real big discussion.
Okay.
On the Public Works Network, which is a website.
All right, so you're not ready to.
That I'm on, and not, and basically, everybody's saying the same thing. You can't do anything on them, the law says you can't do anything on a class six road, the towns can't. And then a lot of them are holding the standards, because they had one where the guy was pumping water out of his sump pump.
Down the road?
Out into the road, and washed out part of the class six road, and encroached onto a class five road, and, um.
But we were gonna adopt.
I think it was in Gulfstown, that just had that, and then, uh, one of our former residents, who was a town administrator in a town not too far from here, weighed in on it. I mean, they had everybody, every town in the state weighed in on it at one point, so.
We were going to adopt Canon, so I wrote it.
And Canon is, yeah.
Had a legal opinion. I also wanted to put a template of a liability with the application.
Right.
That the attorney already approved.
Right, and I saw that, so.
So all I'm waiting for is the procedures, because where do, where do they go now?
It's gonna go in when they.
All three boards still, four boards?
Well, it'll go to them, but it'll go to, when you get, to get a building permit, they, that's gonna be part of the permit process.
They come to the planning board.
So we're allowing buildings on class six roads?
If they do, they have a certain standard that they'll have to do. I don't think we can refuse them totally if they meet the standard.
Right, but they're still going zoning board, planning board, so.
Yeah. They go to zoning, get a rec, get approval, then they go to SLECK, and then. Yeah, and they'll have that, that checklist on the permit, but this is what they have to meet, or that, it's a, it's to tighten it up, so you're not gonna have. You're gonna build a class five road down, down? What's that? You're gonna build, build a road down to class six road standard, or class five road standard? There you go. I'm, I'm serious, are you? What, make a class six road into a class five standard? You know, if they, if they wanna do it, doesn't, they're gonna have to do it at their expense, not our expense.
Well, I realize that, but what's the specifications?
They call it the same specifications, it's all laid out in there, that the specifications have to be with the town maintenance, and that's class five standards, if they're gonna do that, you know. Whatever the class five standards are for the town, which is spelled out right here on our regulations. So that goes back to the conversation, which we're gonna start right now, saying all roads are gonna be at least twenty-two feet wide. I think if they wanna turn it, you know.
Benji's request.
Yeah. A lot of that also has to do with fire protection, and, you know, that goes with the thing about plowing. We had that brought forth in the road down by Daniel's Lake, which is got a steep grade to it. I can't remember the name of it.
Hillbrough?
Huh?
Yes, the, the Hillbrough or something.
Hillbrough?
Yeah, and that's a private road, and somebody wanted to know if it wasn't plowed, well, we don't do it.
Not yet.
It's a private road, wow, they never finished it, so.
Yeah, I know.
And at this point, we're not, um, you know.
Right, you can't touch it.
So we can't touch it, but there is the guy who has it, and he's got a truck that plows it, so. Because they couldn't get up it, and they were complaining, well, sorry.
There's a sign right at the beginning of it, right, saying it's not town maintained?
I don't think the, I don't know if the sign fell down, or got knocked down, or what, but, but they were complaining, you know, it's not our road, so. Okay, the other item we're gonna talk about, road standards, is the pavement width going to twenty-two, which, for low-volume roads, per Benji's request. I know Neil's against it, Neil wants sixteen, and I understand, I understand Neil's question.
The original, the original discussion on this had to do with maintaining the rural character of the town. And in small subdivisions, that meant a relatively narrow road. The original proposal was sixteen feet. Bruce, at one point, had it up to eighteen feet, and then did some other research, and included that twenty feet was the appropriate number. Against my better judgment, I supported that. But going up to twenty-two is, to me, unreasonable. These are relatively short roads, although, not necessarily, but generally speaking, they're relatively short roads. And I think that the accommodation that has to be made by trucks passing, that Benji was talking about, is a relatively small one. And frankly, road widths are much larger than this town really needs. The, the prettier roads are the narrower roads. And yes, you can pass on an eighteen-foot road, people do it all the time, many of our roads are eighteen feet. And we're not reconstructing them, because plows may have to, or people may have to wait while somebody else goes by. That's one of the beauties of a rural community. Or, depending on your point of view, one of the prices you pay for living in a rural community. So I, I really can't support this, but let's not take more time, if you guys have the votes, it's gonna go through.
I thought it was already voted on.
We already voted on it.
We already voted on it.
No, we, we did a straw vote.
Right.
Oh, I think that's why I changed it already.
It wasn't, yes, we haven't done a formal hearing, a public hearing on that, on subdivisions.
Is, is this the public hearing tonight?
Yes.
Yeah, this is the last hearing, we did the first.
Well, there's gonna be another one here now with the fire BS, so we're not done with it yet, but. I'm gonna say I somewhat agree with Neil, but I understand Benji's point of view.
So you're gonna abstain?
Depends how everybody else votes. No, I'm not gonna abstain, I'm gonna vote for it.
I understand Benji's point of view, too, and he's, you know, if, if it wasn't for the plows, I wouldn't understand his point of view. The only reason why I understand it is because of his, his plow configurations. And, and that's, that's what we get for plow configurations, that's not gonna change, he's not gonna have different plow sizes for different roads.
Was his concern that when two plows pass, there's a problem?
No, no, it's plow on the shoulder.
The plow what?
The plow on the shoulder.
The vehicle with, on the shoulder, the plow gets off the edge, you're gonna break the edge of the pavement, just gives it more room, more room to push snow back. And you got a car coming the other way, and plowing at the same time. Yeah, um, you know, the.
One, one can't stop while the other goes ahead?
No, the truck, the.
How are you gonna do that?
It used to be, remember we were growing up, Neil? I mean, it used to be whoever was in the smallest vehicle would put their car in the wood, so the big one could go by, and the big one would pull them out.
Right.
People don't do that anymore.
And the thing is, is that the, the plows are bigger now, they got, the wings on them are bigger, the, the front plows are eleven feet, you know, over eleven feet. You know, then you add another six or seven feet for the wing, and you're out.
And that's the only reason why I'll, I'll support it, is because of the plow issue by itself. If it wasn't for the plow issue, I wouldn't, I would, I would vote no on it, but.
You know, he's the, you know, you get a kinda, he's the, he's the guy that's gonna maintain them, and I mean, I know at one point, well, it's cost more money to, to put the pavement down. That's not the town's problem, that's the contractors when he builds the road, that comes.
That's not, that's not the point of this.
No, but that, that was brought up the original anytime with that, that's, that's a non-issue. That wasn't, had nothing to do with our discussion. Nothing to do with, with, you know, and I think that. At the same time, I do think there's other things that are gonna make the road, especially the low volume.
Your small character, with the, with the turns and everything.
With the sharper curve, and the shorter tangents, I think you're gonna see a more curvilinear road.
Is that in here?
Yes. Centerline curve, raises and.
The tangent length.
Centerline curve is to be, to be down to a hundred foot.
I thought you, you were proposing to change that.
No. I was going to, I changed my mind again, so I didn't, so I didn't, so I didn't hear.
The only thing we're changing is the pavement width.
Maximum, we got a maximum tangent length of three hundred feet, so you gotta, you can only have a straightaway three hundred feet long.
Yep.
So there's gotta be two curves, and you're allowed to have fifty-foot tangent between the reverse curves, so it's, it could be a very curvy.
It's all the terrain better than trying to just cut across.
With the underground utilities, it'll help also.
Let's take Corliss Road. That's the one off one forty-nine, it's a very short road.
It's four hundred feet long.
We all drive by it.
It's four hundred feet, and there are, what, four or five houses at the end?
Yep.
Okay. Assuming, assuming that that road hadn't been built, but the subdivision were up for approval, what would that road look like under the new?
It would have to have a bend in it, because it can't be more than three hundred feet.
It'd have to have a curve, that's right.
Yeah.
And would be a little narrow.
Too steep, and the shoulder would be narrower.
And you'd have underground power.
We have a kiosk, should have, probably have a kiosk at one forty-nine.
Mailbox, yep.
Okay, thank you.
So it'd be, I don't, I don't know if it'd be much different, because you put a little curve into it, you're not even gonna tell it, out from one forty-nine.
Would the curve be significant enough? No.
Probably not, it had four hundred feet, it's not all you can do.
Okay, go on.
The plows are the only reason why I'm in favor of this.
Yeah. Okay, so we're. We're gonna continue the subdivision hearings until February, whatever?
Well, I just pulled out the minutes from when you.
Thirteen?
Agreed on, uh.
It was a straw vote. I know that, we didn't, we wanted to follow here, because Benji came in and complained.
Well, and, and if you're gonna discuss it again, I'll invite Benji.
But this wasn't a straw vote on that, right? Yeah, there was a straw vote before. This one wasn't. You wanna have a straw vote again? Who's gonna be, who's gonna be in favor of the twenty-two feet? Is it straw vote? Against? Yep, okay.
That's what it was last time.
Yeah, straw vote's gonna be four to one, so I don't think we need to have Benji worry about it.
Okay.
So Benji can stay home and get a nap. At this time of year, he probably needs them, probably. We have minutes, right?
Yeah, and if, before you go, if you could take big plans, it would save me on mailing some.
Can you pass those out?
This is one packet. It's coming up on the twenty-third, you've got five cases.
Do these have whitetail? Tail again?
No, Tiffany and Alpha, no, whitetail, sorry.
What, for the revisions?
No, this is, this is whitetail.
I have two Tiffany's.
Yeah, Tiffany lot line, Tiffany subdivision.
I, I have two Tiffany's and one whitetail.
Tiffany lot line, Tiffany subdivision, and whitetail.
Do I have a whitetail?
Alpha storage, I think I already mailed out.
Oh, whitetail, there's the whitetail.
I got it.
Hang on, this is what those additions you gotta put in.
Nobody got Alpha storage yet?
No.
And then the church one just came home.
Oh, the church one for the.
Yeah, for the building.
Yeah. But that's all, those are small, I can mail those.
I'm gonna throw all this, all that stuff away. Anything back from Alclia, or?
No, and I've got, I finally found the person that was going out to the site from DES. There was two or three people fighting back and forth about who was gonna go and help me finish off the inspections.
Finally. Did the.
I call him, you know, once or twice a month, and ask what's been removed, what's been done, and some things have been done, some have not.
Did the landscape people submit a site plan?
Uh, they have the application, they were working on it, and I followed up once.
But while all this is going on, the businesses are still operating as usual.
Yeah.
Not the landscaping, I haven't seen anybody.
Oh, well, I see him around, but I saw one of.
They had a bunch of plows in there.
Do they snow plow too? Because I didn't know.